All right. All right. I'd like to call to order Monday, October 21st, 2024, City Council Meeting, regular meeting at 7:00 PM. If you all rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, all councilors are present today. Everybody have a check, chance to check the agenda and looking for an approval for tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Councilor Holmes makes a motion to approve the agenda. Any second?
Second.
Second by Council President Miller. Any more discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Today we're at the public comment section. Do we have any listed this time? Bad juju, I think wanted to, but no. Seeing that we have no public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we're looking at the October 7th, 2024, City Council Meeting Minutes. Looking for someone to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the minutes as presented.
So President Miller makes a motion to approve as written. Any seconds? Councilor Santiago, second. Any discussion? Any none? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. On to new business. Columbia County Business Community Project, Sierra Tras. I didn't know what to put as your title, your official title. What would you like to be as your official title?
Oh, my goodness. My official title is Small Business Specialist.
And who does it all? Small Business Specialist. She's here tonight to give us an update on Columbia County Business Community Project we've done or they've been working on over the last few months. And, and she also runs Keep It Local. So anything else you'd like to let us know tonight, we'd be happy. But Sierra Tras, if you'd like to take it away.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to present today. I'm excited to talk about this project and the work we've been up to with the community here in Columbia County. Just to double check, I want to make sure that my screen share is going to work. So, I believe. Cool. Are you guys seeing that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So this is the presentation I have today about the Business Community Connection Project. And I'm just going to dive right in. At any point there's questions, feel free to, you know, shout out. I can't see the screen anymore while I'm screen sharing, but good to shout out and I can hear you. And so the Columbia County Business Community Connection Project is a project led by the Columbia Economic Team. And what it's about is really combines a proven model from the University of Minnesota, direct interviews, data analysis, and collaboration to create an informed shared vision for economic development here in the county. And at the heart of this project, if you've heard about it or familiar about it, maybe this is the first time you heard about it. The heart of this project is really to hear from business owners, like what are the struggles and challenges that they're facing? And what can we do as a business development community to support those needs and opportunities here in our county? So this is a very collaborative project, as you'll see on the slide I'll show soon. But overall, the goal is of what this work has been is support and retain and grow local businesses, strengthen partnerships and collaboration with the ecosystem of Columbia County, and establish and implement a shared countywide strategic plan for economic development. So I have data for present today. It's really fascinating, as you'll see soon. And so that's a bit about what I'll be presenting today. So talking about collaboration, we have 25 partners that have been part of this project, as you can see on this big long list everywhere from the cities. Thank you to the many actually staff members of the city of Scappus for participating, commissioners, the PUDs, the chambers of commerce, port. All these different economic related organizations have been part of this project with us. And we had 55 volunteers help us do the interviews of the data that I'll be showing today. So.
Do you have any mayor's help, by the way? I'm just checking.
Yes, we did have a mayor help. So we, the businesses, we completed 75 interviews across Columbia County. And as you can see, this is the participation that we did. So we had a pre-interview survey and a survey that was in one-on-one in person and two-person teams. And so 75 interviews were completed. You can see here the representation. So specific to Scappus, we had 24 businesses represented. And then we were very intentional in this project to represent all kinds of industries across the spectrum. So agriculture, forestry, manufacturing, non-manufacturing trades, retail food and arts, as you can see, represents a lot of businesses. We also were intentional about representing businesses of all sizes as we did these interviews. So we had 56% of businesses were the micro, pretty close to what we see in the county, and then 6% large businesses, as you can see on the scatter plot, the sizes. So today, to dive into some of the data and findings that we had, was we could first look at Columbia County's business landscape. So this is data that's provided by local economic databases, specifically your economy. So in Columbia County, we have most businesses congregated in St. Helens and Scappus. Scappus is just kind of following St. Helens right there. So 27% of businesses in here in the county are in Scappus. In total, we have about 1,587 establishments. Of the businesses here in Columbia County, based off of the pre-interview survey, we found that 80% of businesses have started their business here in the county, which is great. Lots of homegrown businesses. And then LLCs fortunately is the most common, but followed after that sole proprietorship corporation. So good to see there's some protection for businesses. Ownership here in Columbia County, the average years managing a business is 13 years, and about 50% of businesses are one owner, 42% are two owner owned, and 9% or more. In Columbia County, our spread is also for age of businesses, about 25 years old on average, which is pretty impressive. But I will say there's a caveat. We were, since we were intentional about representing all sizes of businesses, some of the older businesses do skew it. So that's why I put this graph here to kind of show a little bit more of that breakdown per age of business. So you'll see an uptick of younger businesses as is pretty intuitive. Demographically and business owners here in Columbia County, this is actually a really fascinating stat. So 56, 58% of businesses are owned and managed by women, 39% men. And then the generations that own businesses, I was kind of surprised to see baby boomers be not as high up. So Gen X looks like the main generation owning businesses right now, followed by millennials, then baby boomers, then Gen Z. Average age is about 48 years old, and then 6% minority owned, 3% veteran, and then 3% LGBTQIA. When we asked businesses in the last three years, has your employee base grown, stayed the same, decreased? We kind of see almost even split of growth and stayed the same, which I consider that a win when we think about the pandemic. And then when we asked in the next three years, do you anticipate any of these changes? You can see that a lot of businesses are planning to continually adapt their goods and services, technology, expand, all healthy signs of a business that continues to innovate. And then it's important to note that the Columbia Economic Team, whenever we saw things like moving or possibility of leaving, that was a flag for us. And we were responding to any resources or flags that we saw in these interviews for the businesses. So some Scappus specific data I have interweaved throughout this presentation. So we've kind of seen the county average here in Scappus, the average years, age of a business is actually younger. And it's also the average years managing a business is older. So that's kind of an interesting insight there that, you know, in Scappus may have younger businesses, but those that are running businesses are of more experience compared to the county. Additionally, when we asked that question, the last two years, has your employee base changed? Here in Scappus, it's kind of very interesting. It looks like there's a lot more retention happening. So a lot of businesses said that it stayed the same. And then 21% said that they've grown. And then kind of alarming, 36% of businesses said that they decreased here in Scappus. For doing business here in Columbia County and Scappus, this is the next part of the presentation. So we asked towards the very end, after we had the business owners think through all these like 30, 20 something plus, 20, 30 questions. We asked, okay, what's your overall opinion of Columbia County as a place to do business? And the average turned out to be 3.31, which is basically like Columbia County is okay, kind of good-ish. It could, it could be better. It's not above average, but it's not below average. It's leaning positive. But of course, we want to see this average bump up. That said, I would say that Scappus actually did very well compared to the rest of the county. So only falling for Nonya, the average kind of bumped up to 3.6. And so that's getting closer to the range of like above average. So that's a positive sign here in Scappus. When we asked businesses, what's your overall opinion of the best things about doing business in Columbia County? This was an open-ended question. They could literally say anything they were thinking. So the top things are really like mushy, gushy, feely stuff, which I think is very fascinating and talks about the human side of being a business owner. So businesses stay here because of community support, friendly relationships, small-town feeling, proximity to home. When they asked about their overall top challenges here is doing business in the county. The top things came to customer base, which is not surprising, as you're going to see in the graph soon, is a struggle, skilled labor, business costs, government coordination. We're the top four mentioned, and you can see the rest from there. And as I mentioned, the customer base, they're definitely, in Columbia County, we have a big challenge here. And so this is a graph of commuting in Columbia County. So as you can see, we have about 6,000 jobs stay within the county, about just shy of 5,000 jobs come, people come into the county for work. And then 18,000 people leave basically every day for work. So massive. We talk about that 73% of commuting, but I think this graph even shows more like the numbers of like, we have a lot of commerce, commerce leaving, talent leaving here in the county.
Sarah?
Yes.
Is on that last one, does that show then the difference? There's 5,900, 6,000 jobs in county and 4,600 people come in. So there's only like 1,400 people living within county that stay here within county?
Basically, only this green part is those that stay here in county. So 6,000.
And an additional 4,600 come in?
So yeah, as I was saying, there's 11,000 jobs in the county. Okay.
Yeah, we have just about 11,000 jobs here in the county.
All right. Thank you.
Perfect. Great question. So then we asked businesses, what's the greatest challenge your business is facing right now? So this is a little more specific to them. This was in the interview rather than the pre-survey. And so you start to see labor rise to the very top, which is, you'll see that come up a lot throughout this presentation. Labor isn't a big issue, followed by financial constraints, construction and parking, which is a lot of the waterfront project in St. Helens. Regulations, bureaucracy, and marketing awareness, top things mentioned. And then we created a curated list of all these possible challenges that businesses could have, and they rated on a scale from one to not difficult to four, very, like almost impossible to manage or do. And this is ranked by relevance. What's relevance is like the challenges most experienced by businesses. So even though selling a business is the highest by average, only 12 businesses said that that was applicable to them. So we ranked this by relevance. The top challenges here in the county are, again, one, finding employees. Two, marketing awareness in my business. Three, making a profit. Four, finding access to capital. And five, finding available land and buildings. Here in Scappus, it's a little bit of a different picture. And as you can see, it's a lot more about regulatory things. So the top challenges instead now state regulatory obstacles and costs, finding available land and buildings, finding employees is third. Fourth is county regulatory obstacles and costs. And fifth is city regulatory obstacles and costs. So then we, throughout the survey, kind of went through all these different economic categories. And we had businesses rank different subsets, factors of those categories. So we're going to go through each of those, starting with workforce. And so this is back to the countywide point of view, and I have Scappus commentary littered through. But first, for the quality of workforce, businesses are pretty satisfied with availability of unskilled labor and union presence. Those are ranked high, as you can see with these averages over here. And then businesses are more dissatisfied with wage rates, availability of skilled labor, and employee healthcare costs. The quote that came out of Scappus is, "Many employees demonstrate a lack of confidence and hold themselves back from taking on other roles." Other comments throughout the county was talking about how it's really competitive to compete with Portland, Longview, all these surrounding cities. And then the cost of living was mentioned, you know, as you can see here in this quote, we're a rural community, yet their wages are relatively low. Quality of education and training, so mixed bag here. Let's say satisfaction with the university degrees, trade schools. PCC OMC certification degrees actually has the highest average, but not as many businesses knew about it, as you can see with those end values. But businesses are dissatisfied for things like K-12 schools and upskilling opportunities in the area. Commentary here in Scappus, a business owner said, "PCC OMC is still very new. I'm excited to see how it turns out, giving our local kids the opportunity to get into the trades. It's great." This comment I thought was very insightful. And they said there's a lack of collaboration between the workforce groups, all the different kinds of services. The ecosystem has a lot of redundancies and overlap. State and federal level organizations do not understand the problems of the local levels facing and make recommendations that are not always applicable. So that was an interesting comment when we brought this up to the group. Quality and transportation and accessibility, basically satisfactions on all things, except local transportation was the only thing that was on the dissatisfied. So highway, rail, air was all positively rated. Here in Scappus, some comments was that there are people who don't move to Scappus as there aren't services or transportation needed here. Another business owner said, "Speed reductions in the areas are implying it's needed. It's a dangerous highway area." For quality of land, buildings, and credit, this one very much stands out. Everything is either dissatisfied or getting close to very, very dissatisfied. So businesses are dissatisfied with availability of land, availability of loans, cost of building and land loans, and even more dissatisfied with the cost of land, cost of commercial buildings, and availability of commercial buildings. Some quotes here in Scappus, "There's not much available. If you want to purchase land to build a commercial area, so you have to work with the city of Scappus, ODA, a lot of government entities. Along with the highway, the only property worth trying to build on, you have to go through a lot. The current buildings that come with available to rent or buy are not in the best shape and quality." Another business owner said, "Availability is difficult because you may be able to purchase it, but you may not get it permitted. There are a lot of wetlands around Scappus, and it's often a roadblock to properties." This was a huge topic talked about. So we did this presentation in each of the cities here in Columbia County and in the room. Definitely land access, as we saw in the top five challenges in Scappus is talked about a lot. So, you know, I think that's something that we can continue to try to think through about how we can make space accessible for business owners. Quality of capital access, also everything is on the dissatisfied level here. So businesses are dissatisfied with adult financial education opportunities, business loans, startup business loans, and business organs loan offerings. One comment here in Scappus said that the SBDC is doing a great job with educating. So that was a kind compliment to our team. And then other themes around the county, either businesses knew about startup loans, and they were like, wow, it's very difficult. As you can see with that last comment, a business owner said that they felt like they were being picked apart when they tried to look local. So various comments were saying they were looking outside the county for loan options. Or the other most common comment was, are there any? Or I don't know. So there's also a lack of awareness for what's here locally for lending opportunities. Quality of utilities is basically positive, everything from electricity, sewer, natural gas. The only thing, as you can see and probably would guess, is negative, is broadband. So everything that was related to broadband is on a dissatisfied level. Here in Scappus, internet has been, has had more access and has gotten better. So there was a compliment to internet here in Scappus. And then lots of enthusiasm for the PUD. So Columbia River PUD is fantastic to work with. Another one said, "The utilities are a good thing in Columbia County." So great to see that. Quality retail and local business support, a mixed bag, and you might need eagle vision for this one. But business owners are happy with the way business owners are supporting one another, community services, citizens supporting local businesses, safety, security, wayfinding signage, coordinated store hours, and the pro-chamber programs. They're more dissatisfied on things like parking, availability of places to eat, though that was an uptick ever since the lodge came to Scappus. I saw that in the Scappus comments. Overall parents of the area, county, city, and state elected officials supporting local businesses, variety of places. And the very bottom one was incentives offered in investment facilities, workers, and/or sales. Some commentary here in Scappus, "Scappus is not a pretty town. It does not have a good walking pass or bike pass. It feels disjointed. Fernonia did a good job." Another business owner said, "The lack of downtown area, it would be nice if the buildings were a more coordinated theme, like an incentive or assistance to clean up building. Downtown needs a presence." Another business owner says, "City staff and leaders could do a better job. They don't reach out to us." And I wouldn't say that's unique to Scappus. There was actually across the county, various business owners said they felt like they weren't seeing their local leaders say hi to them. And then another one was, "Businesses in Columbia County, small and large, do a great job of finding synergies and ways to work together." For quality of government and regulations, business owners are happy with the fire and city business fees. They also talked about being happy with county business fees, environmental regulations, county planning and zoning, and county code enforcement. And then less satisfied with things like street maintenance, city code enforcement, and city planning and zoning. There was really only one quote I could find from here in Scappus, and it talked more about the county level. So the county's planning and zoning has gotten harder to work with, is what my business owner said. For quality of life, definitely like very strong opinions in this one. So business owners are very satisfied for things like volunteer opportunities, a sense of community belonging, recreational opportunities, dissatisfied with the housing supply and availability of childcare, and then very dissatisfied with housing costs, adequate healthcare facilities nearby, and childcare costs. Which, there's actually a report that just came out about the public health. They did a big survey, and it basically reflects around a lot of these same things. So I recommend reading that report, too. Here in Scappus, some quotes was, "People move here for a sense of community." Another said, "I've heard anecdotally that childcare costs are high and not even available. We were almost at the point of having to set up an internal childcare program because employees needed it." Other themes across the county was, "The port's doing some great stuff, and we don't have enough living wage jobs, and I think that impacts quality of life." So living wage really comes up a lot. So then we asked business owners, like, what kind of solutions would you like to see? So on a countywide level, they, we basically asked the question, "There are many ways to support and grow Columbia County's local economy. In your opinion, please read how important these solutions could be for Columbia County's business community. The top requested economic solutions were, one, more CTE programming in the high schools. Second, revitalize downtown areas. Third, more efforts to encourage local shopping. Fourth, advocate for businesses better and local and state dues. And five, develop and restore more commercial buildings." And then some ones that follow right after that are, "Ensure county process regulations are free, are more business-friendly, build more housing in the county, better market Columbia County to visitors, more training class opportunities, and develop more recreational attractions." And Scappus is a little bit of a different picture. So yes, CTE programming in the high schools was still ranked very highly. And then revitalized downtowns were still the top two matching the county. But then we see develop and restore more commercial buildings be the third top request here in Scappus. Fourth was more training classes and certification opportunities specific to employees. And then fifth, develop more shovel-ready land in the county, which I think is really fascinating, as we know, there's a lot of shovel-ready land around PCC OMC. So there might be a lack of awareness, or maybe it's not as attractive to businesses. So that was an interesting insight, particularly here in Scappus, that I got on the top five. So for next steps, how this process is worked. So we've done all these interviews. And we have what this, a group of all those partners that I listed earlier as part of our task force team. So our task force team met last week, and we went through all this data, and we kind of talked early about like, how can we create a countywide strategic plan? Or a vision for economic development here in the county, identifying, we identified four different focus areas, including ways to revitalize downtowns from a countywide level support. A system, education opportunities, as you know, seeing CTE come up a lot in high school programming, that was another thing that we came up as a group. Focusing on also better awareness of what the county already has here for resources. And so creating some kind of guide was a top idea of pointing business owners to, here's all these different resources. And then the other one, as we saw earlier in Scappus and across the county, like business owners are really struggling with permitting processes and navigating regulations here in the county. And they feel like it's a moving goalpost, and they just can't plan if things constantly change, and they don't know what to expect. So we had also a whole group of folks, and including some of the Scappus staff team, be part of that group and brainstorm. How can we create a clear process and document in all the cities and county to show these different processes? So that it's a clear guidance of like, okay, here's your timetable to expect your permitting process. Here's our clear steps of going through everything. And from a Columbia Economic Team standpoint, since we do free one-on-one confidential business advising, that kind of resource will be very helpful to clearly communicate to businesses. So there's no lack of surprises that they'll be facing. So those were some of the top ideas that came out of that task force retreat. We're working on putting that into a formal document. Then we're going to break out into action teams, focus on playing those strategic priorities and actual steps towards them over the next one to five years. And then we're going to meet as a task force team every three to four times a year to just check on one another, hold each other accountable, and keep this work flowing. Because we don't want it to be just something that sits on a shelf. And, you know, we never like data that becomes that kind of project, and you ask people's opinion and do nothing with it. That's not what this is. And then we plan to repeat this process every three to five years to then, you know, see how we're progressing and get business owner feedback over and over again. So that is overall the project. Any questions?
Yes.
I know I threw a lot at you.
Sarah, thank you for that. It's, it's great to hear it again. I just learned so much again from your presentation. So who did you say is part of your task force team? Was that again?
Yes.
And specifically, and then do we, and what kind of representation do we have here in Scappus?
Yeah, I would say Scappus deserves a medal. We actually have very good participation here in Scappus. So we have NJ joining our team, Lori, and the new city manager, Ben, are all part of our team, helping us. And so, and then representation across the county was each of the cities, county commissioners, the workforce entities here in the county. We would like to get more superintendents involved for the workforce side. I think I said commissioners, chambers, port, St. Helens Main Street Alliance. And I think I'm missing some.
Carl Fenstermaker, did he do some of the interviews as well? Remember Carl got, yeah, Carl stepped up. And I worked with Sean Clark from Port of Columbia County. They teamed us together, and we went to accompany St. Helens and a Columbia, you know, pad down the highway. So I didn't do any within Scappus, but they were really in-depth, sit-down discussions, took an hour or more. And really, it was interesting listening to them and seeing this transfer. I mean, there were the lack of funding and financing that they could find, or, or definitely retail space or commercial space. Yes, we have a lot of shovel-ready land, but it's a lot of industrial land. More of these might be commercial-type buildings that want just a storefront to put a little store in. But it was a really in-depth, and I'm seeing too, taking notes, Scappus wanted to revitalize downtown. So we keep hearing that, and that's something we can focus on. Getting out to businesses, maybe that's something we can figure out a way we can be more active and out into these local businesses to see that we're here and, and helping. So I think getting your report eventually, that will be good to help us go out and help these businesses as well.
Yes. Yeah, we have four reports completed. It's the Doing Business in Columbia County Report, a city breakdown report, which you can see even more specific here to Scappus of where they ranked all those factors. We also have a workforce report and a, what am I missing? Workforce report and, oh, a business profile report that kind of talks about demographical. So if, if there's a good place that I can email those reports to and it gets distributed to, I'd be happy to share that.
I would then send them to Ben.
Cool. I will do that.
And Carl, our EDC is working on a strategic plan. So it'll be interesting to see your strategic plan, too, if there's anything they can take from that as well. Great.
Awesome.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Make sure you guys check it, Keep It Local, and Jason Moon with the SBDC. There is a lot of great opportunities, resources for our local businesses. So CET does a really good job of providing, so make sure they get out. Appreciate it. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I hope you have a wonderful night, and if more questions come up, just feel free to reach out to me.
Will do. Thank you. Okay, Charlotte Baker comes up. We're on to number three. Looking at Resolution 24-16, a contract approval, WWTP consort. Contract Ministry of Charlotte Baker will be the lead on this tonight.
Just, okay, just wanted to make sure it was on. I don't know if I'm the first person up here. Good evening, mayor and council. I am here once again with a wastewater treatment plant-related item. I know you have the staff report in front of you, and I don't want to just summarize it, but I do want to give a little bit of history, because I think some context kind of explains how we got to where we are. So back in 2019, the city issued an RFP. So back in 2019, the city issued an RFP for the wastewater treatment plant. These one improvement project for a design engineer. Part of that RFP was that the winning proposer would obviously do the design, but then stay on for the project during the construction phase to do technical project management tasks essentially. Hansor was the winning proposer again back in 2019. At that point, they didn't want to put a number to their the technical project management piece. You, I guess that that the the actual construction would be pretty far in the future. Again, this is, you know, five years ago. But I get there was an agreement that they would be continuing on to do the technical project management. So fast forward four and a half or so years. July or August of 2024. We're ready to go ahead and have consort start the technical project management. We've got McClure on board to do the construction. I came to you on August 5th with a task order authorization for consort to do the project management or the technical project management. It was about $900,000. You all approved that task order. I went ahead and sent the documents to consort to sign. It took them about six weeks to get back to me and they had some red lines. At that point, I went back to our initial contract and I realized it's expired. It had expired a few weeks prior. So at that point I sought the advice of Ben and also our attorney, sort of what should we do to fix this situation? Because we can't have a task order, of course, for a contract that does not exist any longer. So Ashley, our attorney, Ashley, Ashley Dugill, determined that the best way forward is to obviously we have to have a new contract with consort for the project management tasks. But also we need to have an exemption for our typical procurement process. You know, normally a contract of this size would require a formal procurement. But state law and are also also our local contracting rules allow exemptions to be made for special circumstances, which this is one. Not only was consort always expected to do this work. It's it's not like we're asking them to do a new project. We're simply asking them to finish their existing project. It is their design. I mean, it it doesn't make sense to have someone else come on and try to do technical project management using consort's design, which they're of course intimately familiar with. They've been working on for 2019. So that those are the sort of the two components that I'm proposing I have before you today is a resolution to exempt this contract from the typical procurement. So we can just do a sole source procurement and turn to a contract with consort and also redo, so to speak, of the task order approval as a contract approval. I know that's kind of this is more complicated than things I typically bring before you. So if there are any questions, please.
Mr. Mayor, can I add to?
Yes, please.
So yeah, they Charlotte had brought this to me and due to the situation, I wanted to make sure that we we're definitely following our own procurement rules. And I want to make sure with state laws. Well, so we reached out to the attorney. And what the feedback was, was this is a very small risk. You know, there, there was the proposal. Well, what happens if the city is signing? It's kind of already there's a contract there. What happens? And, you know, Ashley said, she's like, well, this is already part of the scope. It's all there. This isn't a violation. It wouldn't be a violation of state law. But it's your own city's procurement laws that were really running into this one. And it's kind of a clerical issue because it's just overlapping a week. It was already part of the project. And so in effort to make sure we're being transparent and doing things the right way, even though there was a really small risk in going forward with the contract, it was decided to bring it to the council just to stick with that because that, I mean, that's kind of my policy is it doesn't matter if it's smaller or not. I I'm all about transparency on there. And so it was just the right thing to do is why we brought it there. But it really is. As she had mentioned, it's it's a clerical city procurement issue is why we're asking for the exemption for something that was already scoped out and approved to do. It's only to renew the contract basically. And because it's a new contract is why we have to bring it back. If it was nothing changed in it, it could have extended that even though it lapsed. It was just because there was like a few items adjusted in there for insurance levels and other red lines as she had mentioned. So it it became a new contract, which is why we're here.
My question, the other option is you're going out for bids, which is take time.
Yeah. And I also.
It's a full process when we do, if you do that.
Yeah. And I, I was talking to Dave about it. He wasn't sure that anyone would even want to be interested because I guess, why would you want to do technical project management using someone else's line? I also think it would be probably a big detriment to the city. Because, you know, consort is already intimately familiar with their design. They understand the intent behind certain decisions that they made and so on and so forth. It would take another engineering firm, if they were even interested, some time to sort of get up to speed and understand. It's a pretty complicated project with, you know, this is phase one, but there's also multiple phases within phase one.
And this is all somewhat within budget. I mean, this is all budgeted.
Yeah. And this is the number that they're we're requesting or that concerts requesting has not changed from the August 5th task order. It's the exact same. We just, it's just a contract authorization as opposed to a task order, but the number that they're requesting is the same.
Counselor Holmes?
Is this the last task that was outlined in the original contract or are we going to encounter a similar situation? Have a outstanding task from that, but the contract is expired.
No. So sort of as this is semi complicated. This task was outlined in the RFP, but it was not in the initial contract from 2019, which is again, another reason we have to have another contract. I don't, I'm not sure why it was left out of the initial contract because it was of the the bid package and and you know, what they viewed when they submitted their bid back back in 2019. But this is the final, this is the last thing we'll ever have consort do because once once McClure is the construction company, once they're done, consort is done. We just need to have them on board because they obviously have the technical knowledge. We're, the city is still doing some project management, but not, not the technical project management that we really need consort, you know, so we can have their actual engineers who did the design to sort of answer questions and help guide McClure as they're starting their construction work. So to answer your question, that was a very long answer. To sum it up, this is the final end of task for consort. Yeah.
There's no more questions, I guess, if looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 24 dash 16, exempting a contract for construction management services from the local procurement requirements and authorizing the city manager to directly contract with consort, Inc.
Motion by Counselor Holmes to approve the resolution 24 16, exempting a contract for construction management services from the local procurement requirements and authorizing the city manager directly contract with consort, Inc. Any seconds? Counselor LeFrenz seconds. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Just posted. Moving on to vacation time rollover. City manager Ben Burgener take the lead on this one.
Right. Stop. Report is presented in general. I've started looking at some personnel policies and we, there are typical updates that we're going to probably do for a personnel policy with sick leave organ updates and other typical things. But one of those areas was just could could be around this area with sick leave and how that is carried over or different policies and ways to do that. One of those options that I've explored in other cities was having a max payout, which would be the same as we have, but allowing it to accrue. So it's not like this user to lose it. It gives them flexibility to manage their own time. Anyway, there, there's no definitive ask for personnel policy update. I want to make sure that we could come back with enough time for that, but because it's the end of the year. And because this year you went out to look for a city manager and there were some several administrative staff that didn't necessarily get the time to use their vacation, they're past their limit. And they can get it done by the end of December, but they've expressed that it'd be disruptive. Number one, it's not for the purpose they want to use vacation. It's getting forced to use. So they don't lose it. And then they're not able to get the the work that they want to get done by the end of the year. So per the unusual circumstances, not knowing what's going to be adopted and work with the council for future things. I was just asking for an exemption just this year for special circumstances like those where there's one regular staff as well that came back in after being on admin for a long time. He didn't have a chance to use it, obviously. So i- if they are not able to get there, I just want to be able to allow them to carry over and and give extra time to use that this extra year, which would be an exception to our policy. But I'm saying, I'm just, I'm not looking for an adopted policy, just an exception this time for this year.
So do you kind of understand? I mean, is it, is it like three days? Use it or lose it type. You have three days of personal time. Don't carry over.
Right. So, so I'll give and throw you under the bus, Susan. It's funny. So no, she's one. She's one of them. Dave, there, there are several that had mentioned it, but I am going to throw her under the bus because of a comment she made. I thought it was just really profound. So doing a lot of great work was awarded 80 hours of extra vacation as a bonus, I guess, from that Larry, I think it was Larry or the counselor, whoever gave her some of that. The comment she made several weeks ago was like, it feels more like a curse than than something that was an award because now I'd be forced to use this. I haven't had a chance and have so much work I need to get done between now and the end of the year. Was it really a reward? And I, I just told her, I was like, you know, that's a good point. I'd be happy to bring it back. Make sure it still stays as a reward. Because we can adjust this pretty minorly. It's not a huge impact. There's no immediate impact. The, the cost of that now compared to next year is the same per hour. Yeah, the only real risk is I guess Susan decided oh, it would be the same as she'd quit in December. Like I'm just trying to think of fiscal impact. It's not really any immediate impact. It's more just.
I see it. I mean, definitely saw during the city manager hiring process we did. I know Dave himself missed out on some vacations and really needed to be here and was. And now instead of giving him 12 months to kind of work that, you were all of a sudden making them four months to put all, get all that done. And I don't see really an issue with adding six months as a cushion. The financial, I'd rather them spread that out over the next, let's say eight months than the next two months. And then the two months that'll be gone completely the whole time. And that will affect us more than if they spread it out.
Right. And number one, yeah, disruption of services because what's happening, they're starting to spread those out every single week and they're just taking days off because they have to take days off. Compared to being able to use vacation time with force and tend to actually go on a vacation to recoup and actually like plan to go somewhere or even do a staycation to just be able to take care of your, your home life as well. So being able to take it in a full week chunk or two week chunk. And this, so there for them specifically as example, they're both like three weeks of vacation in excess. That would be losing. And and there are plans to get some of that down. That's just their current rate. But yeah, by the end of the year, it's probably within a week of excess. So it's just depending on how they have their schedule set up.
So just to recap, this is a one time thing. It's not an ongoing policy of the city that you're asking for us to approve.
One time exception.
And then my only other concern would be, this is, the way that I understand this is this is left to your discretion, but are you going to make kind of a decision making like a written policy or anything? I just anytime that anything's left anybody's discretion, I get concerned about claims of discrimination and having an actual adopted policy for it.
Right. The, the policy that I'm going to have, there has to be a verifiable reason of why I wasn't able to use. It's not just, oh, I didn't get to it or my, my manager didn't whatever. I mean, there are really only three or maybe four people that this is even applying to, and all four of them, I have already justified reason of why. And two of them I already mentioned because you like Dave, as you mentioned, he was acting city manager and going through that. Susan was the other one. We had a police officer that was out on admin and is now back. Well, now he's only got, you know, three months and he's been gone the rest of the time, but all that time accrued. And so as opposed to putting the police and that, and that one would probably have to work with the union on a blurt that, hey, he's back, but now he's going to be gone for two months to, to work that off. You know, giving flexibility if it's asked for and if it's warranted. Everybody else is well under and it's not even a concern. It's really, when I looked at them, all of them already had that justifiable need. But it would have to be a specific reason like that. There is not just a, you know, like slide this in for me.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Cause I think just that discussion alone is useful for for this or the concern. Thank you.
Can you make sure on there they, they keep their city phone with them on, on though in those. Okay.
So a question for you is if they're accruing at their current rate and you extend them six months into next year to take the time off, they're still going to continue to accrue. So are we going to run into this again come the end of next year? These individuals?
Um, hopefully not. And that's just giving them flexibility because it's getting jammed towards this end of the year. And I didn't have time to actually go through our personnel policy to make recommendations. There are recommendations that, like, like I mentioned, one of those proposals, then we did this in another city. Was the use it, lose it policy. I'm typically not the biggest fan of. I think it's punishing to a lot of people and they're, they're, they're grown up. They can choose if they want to take their vacation or not. But you can't obviously let them accrue indefinitely because there's the risk of liability. So one of those we did was a, you just, there's the, you kept the cap in there. But they could keep accruing. That way they could do their vacation in January, February or whatever. They still, they're still subject to the same rules. You have to get approved by your manager. You can't just take off anytime and like, oh, I agreed like eight months of vacation. I'm going on vacation. Now there's still business need. There's still all those things that are constraints around people abusing that. That doesn't have to be the policy. I'm just saying there are other policies that I've looked at in the past that don't seem to have that same issue, especially towards department heads. Usually with the regular staff, this is, they seem to use it pretty well and don't even get close to these caps. But it seems like department heads in general have a harder time getting out just because of their work schedule and what they have to do. So, and there's not as much with department heads by nature, it's a little harder to get your cross training of people to do your job because it just doesn't work. So yeah, I, I don't have a proposal for that now. That's just something in it. So I mean, if, if, just an example, if that did get adopted, then it wouldn't be a problem for this particular instance. Otherwise the, the goal right now is they know they're accruing and hey, this is going to become an issue. This is one time because of what happened. You, you need to plan your vacation accordingly, hopefully within the first couple of months. But.
I know I definitely use a lot of my vacation late in the year, nothing early. So if I the first six months was no vacation, then all of a sudden had to use some extra at the end. I mean, yeah, now that they know they can maybe spread it out.
Right. Part of the user or loser, and I don't like is usually they end up losing all your department heads at the end of the year, which is disruptive too.
I just have, just for the record, and I don't see it in the document, what is, you have the use it or lose it. Is that zero by the end of December 31st?
No.
Just, just for the record, like what are, are they allowed to roll over?
Yeah, they're, they're already allowed to carry over. Regular staff is 200 and, or sorry, leader department heads is 248. 248 and that's 200 for the regular, for the union employees. Yeah, 200 hours that can get carried over. Anything beyond that, you lose if you don't use it.
Thank you. Just wanted.
Right.
And so this does request a vote and a formal action?
Yeah, yeah, just a motion that since it is an exception to our policy and that to show that you're supportive and that I can make that decision if necessary. I don't know if it will. There's just the request that possibly do that for those people.
Want this to go through just for the motion, do you, what dates do you want or what timeframe do you want stated?
I just until, since I said a six months, so just till July. So the end of June, I guess, by the end of this fiscal year.
30?
For this.
June 30th.
This current fiscal year.
Twenty twenty five. Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
I move that council authorized the manager Burgender to make exceptions at his discretion for our leave policy as discussed on the record through this fiscal year, 24, 25.
Motion by Council President Miller to prove the city manager basically to determine the employees accrual beyond their vacation cap up to June 30th. Second by Counsel Santiago, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ben. Okay, onto the calendar. October 21. Tomorrow night, Big City County Dinner, 6:00 PM, Senior Center. Patty Mulvahill from the LOC will be speaking. We have over 42 people signed. We have over forty-two people signed up now, I think forty-three, forty-five. You guys, yeah, they may not have food, but, so maybe we'll have a couple ex- something on the side, a couple Totinos. We have the businesses trick or treat, Scapoo's Downtown, three to five on October thirty-first. And by the way, we do have, I'll bring this up now, on the twenty-third, from about eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, the third grade classes are coming into here. So if any of you are available for one hour, twenty minutes, whatever, to come in and meet the classes, third grade classes, probably will have to see a police car and turn on a siren, and then come in here for twenty minutes, but that'll be on the twenty-third, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, six different classes. On November, uh, November fourth, city council work session at six P M. Council meeting at seven P M., Veterans Day, Oct- November eleventh, city offices closed. E D C meeting on the fourteenth, they moved it up to the fourteenth at noon. U R A meeting on November eighteenth at six P M., followed by our council meeting at seven P M. Parks and Rec scheduled for November twenty-first at six P M. On November twenty-eighth, Thanksgiving, Happy Thanksgiving, city offices closed, and on the twenty-ninth as well. We are, you do have all the, the staff updates, the, in your packet, on the department head updates, you can see those. City Manager Ben Burgener, do you have anything for tonight?
Um, ju- just back to the work session, summing that up, would you, I was just thinking as we're going through this, it might be beneficial if I sent out some specific questions, so everybody's answering the same questions. Probably about our specific committees, how we see the value of them, what you'd like to see, you know, I'll come up with some questions around those. So we, we did a good, and I'll go back to, what's the point of the committee, we did a really good job at joining that and, and consolidating those things together, so I'll put that together, and then looking at our specific committees, or any that we don't have, just to ask those questions around that. So that you can respond all to the same questions, it'd be easier to solidify those answers if it's around the same stuff.
Well, and, I mean, J J showed up presumably because she's, you know, Vice Chair of the Parks Committee, do you want to hear from other committee members?
Yeah, originally, we were looking at inviting them to this meeting, but then, since we're looking at specific committees, it was just, let's, let's talk about committees in general first, because that's a little more helpful to determine, so we can determine what type of committees we want, how they're structured. It could be a conversation. I mean, yes, the plan is eventually, depending on structure though, so so for example, if you decide that one of those is gonna be an ad hoc or taken away, you know, we're gonna be working with a different committee, or no committee, you know, it just really depends on, on the result of those preliminary discussions, I would say. And that would be more when we're going down into, okay, let's look at these standard operating procedures, let's get their feedback, how we're working, what pitfalls we've had. So that, that was a conversation I was originally thinking of having tonight, but then we took, I know I took a step back based off of some feedback. And I really thought it was beneficial to do that high level beforehand. So with this particular one, it's again, since it's, and that's a good question, you get some feedback on, you know, is that, what point? So I, I was thinking the next work session, based off the feedback, would be to send out those questions, come back and talk about the answers of those, and consolidate those together, I don't know if that would really be the time to bring them in, that the issue or the potential risk of bringing them in is, it could be a lot of the word, but grandstanding saying, hey, let, let me sell you on why we should be here, let me sell you on this, and kind of distract from what the, the goal of the council is, coming from, once again, from you guys directing or leading the path as opposed to the other route.
Maybe if you could develop one or two questions for them, you know, we feel we want to hear from them, just to get an input, and maybe email them and let them give you, so they don't go off the whole thing, but just answer this question, you know, whatever that is.
Well, so, so would you like feedback for this next work session from them yet, or do we want to have one more work session before we get feedback from them?
I think, I think we can wait, but I think we do need to communicate to them, kind of what is the conversation that's happening, and what is the process, like, when will they be engaging in that, just so it's not a mystery and there's not certainty that.
I agree.
Reads other things, so I think.
Yeah, no, as soon as I saw J J, I was like, I'm gonna email her, they're not, to my, tonight and tomorrow, let her know kind of what's going on, because I had talked to her before, that we're gonna start talking about committees, and that we're gonna get feedback from them, but I, I told her we'd, we'd reach out with an invite of when that's gonna happen, so as, as I talked to Joe during the commission, like, we're just not there yet, or during the League of Oregon Cities, so let's not reach out to them yet, and I said, okay, no, that's, that's actually a good, good feedback, so.
I felt like this was more the high level first, and then they're definitely gonna be involved in it, and we'll get their feedback, but you know, us first.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do you guys this time for the next work session, planning that, eventually after that, we'll get them involved, and the, the meeting after that.
You can send an email, or do you liaise on to that information?
Well, so this one, I was saying I'd email to you guys about these specific questions, this will meet, work session next time, and then we'll discuss how we want to go forward. Oh, yeah, liaison, that would be, I don't know, do you want to reach out as a liaison to kind of let them know?
I do want someone to reach out, just to kind of let them know that this wasn't, this was this, and then we'll, they'll be there, we'll come to them soon, but.
Right, I was planning on meeting out, but if, if you feel that as a liaison, that would be a better.
I, I just know, for example, the E D C is looking at us, and I just want to know what's going on, if they're not listening to the council's questions, I just.
I do think there should be unified communication on.
Yes.
Thing is, I know I'll get a phone call. And then what?
Right, just direct them, I'll, I'll send out, I'll reach out to them. And let them know.
Larson, you have anything for tonight?
L T, Intern Chief covered it to handout. Their devices were tested and passed, uh, for eleventh, the very last page of the, created the high school game in St. Helens, had a good presentation there. Our entire process closes, fifth interview is at the Troy Gainer's return is doing well, new S P culture. Things come up that we're working on. As the year date looks like a thirty-sixth and twenty-sixth.
So tomorrow, the internal field training officer interview panel. Does that allow us to then have a potential one more field training officer instructor?
Plus another one early next year.
Appreciate it, great, if you could just pass it on, if, if somebody from the police department will be here that morning on Wednesday, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty.
Intern Chief will be here.
Perfect. Get some, the kids, yeah, okay, thank you. Counselor Jacobs?
One more, real quick before we go to the council, just from the staff, so I, I have these staff reports in here, the point of these is for your benefit. So I worked with some, the goal was to make these a little bit more concise and direct, so I worked with the planning commission, or the planning department, and they shortened theirs from like many pages to where they're at right now, I, I'm still working with the finance. Anyone who's, my opinion, a little long, we could probably consolidate that a little bit to, to shorten it up for you, maybe. So that my question for you is, what are your thoughts on these department reports, are they beneficial, would you like to see something different? Are some of them too long? Like I said, my, my goal is to shorten them up, but I want to get your feedback at their stuff that's missing, that you're like, wait, I would really like to know a little bit more of that. The, the goal of the department reports is to stay out of the weeds, but to keep you up to date with the big things that would impact you, if you ever got questions or want to know what's going on in the city, so that you're well informed.
I personally do like, I, maybe on the finance, maybe just a, an attorney bill, you know, showing breakdown of, of hours, and just are we, are we doing there? Or any other-ish, you know, any other items within the budget, I don't know how to read one really yet like this quickly. But I do think it's valuable, I don't know about once a month, once a quarter, again, just kind of what has happened since the last month. Kind of narrowed down, though, I like the police report one, it's great, you know, it just goes over everything that's happened, it's perfect. That's my feeling.
Community development, I think, is, as is also.
Yeah, so just, you don't have to have all the answers today, but just think about that, if there's stuff missing on those reports, or you like, or there's too much, that the last thing I want is to send you a report, that you're like, what do I do with this, and then you just toss it aside, because it's just too much, too complicated, not easy to read, or not having any value for you. Both for you, but also for the staff, because if it's not providing value, it's wasting their time. But if it is something that can provide value and help you, you need more information, or it would be better to simplify, just let me know, and we can work through that, as, as time goes on.
I would say for me on the financial, if it's possible to do just a dashboard
that's.
For each department, right, because if you're eighty percent spent in six months, okay, that's gonna draw your attention. You know, rather than just having the rows and rows of numbers.
Right, and one of those things, so if you go to page two. Oh, you mean like a graph?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we could, we could get some visuals in there. If you go through the general fund, kind of interesting, general fund has four different departments, but it's contained on two pages. So if you look at page two, you have your police department, municipal court, park, all laid out just by payroll, material service, capital outlay. It's just short and concise, and so one of the things I talked to Carol, I was like, well, maybe we could do that for the rest of these, and just make them on like one or two pages, get all those departments. You can't have the numbers, I mean, the advantage going through this, it shows period actuals compared to last year, where you are compared to the budget. It does have your percentage on the right side, you know, to let us know, you know, for example, looking at the police. Just at any of the police department, you're only at sixteen percent, twenty-five percent, well, total, the police department's only at fifteen percent of the budget. We're a quarter of the way through the year, so twenty-five percent would be that, so we're well ahead of our budget, we're doing really well on the police, so it's not the easiest to read, but that's kind of what this information shows. And so my, my original was, yeah, let's consolidate, it's just a couple pages, so it's really just to get through those numbers that you can use, we got some graphs about some big items. A dashboard type of field to that could be, I'll help her work on something like that, see what we can come up with.
Anything else on that, appreciate it, I know I have to do reports every week, and if, if I put like six mistakes in on purpose to see if they're reading it, you better come back to me with those, hey, what's this all about? We hide a few things in there to make sure we're reading it. Okay, thank you, Counselor Jacobs?
The Run With Neil was a couple weeks ago, it was a lot of fun, I like the fact that we were all contained cool and not going to the streets, so it was a lot safe. The other thing I'd like to say, thank you, City Manager and for getting us a lot more structure and a lot more site and visibility, I really appreciate your leadership bringing here.
Thank you.
A lot of time.
Thank you. That's all our friends.
Yeah, just with the shorter days and Halloween coming up, encourage everyone to slow down and drive cautiously.
Thank you, Counselor Hils.
Nothing from me tonight.
You, Counselor Santiago?
Uh, yes, Run With Neil was a couple weeks ago, geez, it takes forever, we had a great time, I did pull a hammy. But that's okay, I'm getting over it, because I thought I was gonna walk in, I ended up running, walking it, so, my fault. A couple of things, uh, let's see, I didn't, I don't have my phone with me, but I know there's, P C C O M I C is having lots of things for, for kids and businesses, so please, if you don't follow them, uh, O M I C, P C C, and City of Scapoo's, please do so, there's lots of information. Another thing I want to say is, please educate yourself and vote, make sure you're registered, it's, voting is coming up in a few weeks. Please do vote, and then the L O C conference. Mayor Backes, City, City Manager Ben, and I went to the L O C conference, it was great and meant lots to learn, they really kept us busy from seven to, say, ten P M. And so I just wanted to, I did want, I did want to bring a couple of things to the council, because they had great ideas. One of the thing is that, for sure, every city, we govern differently, right? And each council is different, and we are all new, so we should have our rules that reflect us. So a lot of the cities that they found is that they're going by rules and charters that, you know, gosh, some set in nineteen, the nineteen seventies or something like that, sixties and seventies, so they're, it's not realistic, and it's not current, it's not working for the current council, so if the rules are not working for us, we have the right to change those. So we should be looking at our charters, our rules, and, and all the rules that apply to us at least two to five years. But at least, you know, while we're here, so. The thing is that we need to follow our procedures all the time and be consistent. Let's see, I'm just going, I highlighted, I'm not gonna show you the whole sessions, but I'm just highlighting a couple of things. You brought up Florence has a great example on counselor norms, so I'm gonna take a look at that and bring that to the group. I don't know if you have there, but the, um, some of the things that we need to change is, obviously, we need to get them attorney involved, speak out for the public. We have the L O C resources to, to, to make those changes, and like I said, we need to make those changes every, I would say, two years. I did see, Patty did agree, Patty, that's gonna be speaking at our dinner tomorrow, she also decreed, agreed to change them every, her thing, she said two to, three to five years. I believe our charter was updated in twenty-eleven, but if it wasn't, because I read somewhere, but if, you know, I, I recommend that we put a date in our charter and our documents, because I don't see it, or last updated, it would be great, because I didn't see a date on that on those documents. Another thing that was brought up, and I thought that was interesting, is that we don't have any really interaction with the municipal judges here, and that's something that, since we do appoint them, why don't we have like, just like we do an annual review for our city manager, why don't we do that for our judges? I mean, I just thought that was an interesting point that we can take a look at. Everyone in the council is subject to recall, F Y I. If you didn't know, and then we should look at every, all of the, our rules and it as council, even though we're all getting along and we're, everything is, everything nice, we should look at the worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario, that's how we should be thinking about our rules and really regulations and charter. And let's see. Another thing I thought it was interesting that was brought up, is that your role, I think that a lot of the mayor roles should be attending legislative meetings. Salem, so, you know, so we can, I'm not sure if that's what you, mayors have done in the past, but I thought that was really interesting. Some of the terms were in, I think, two years, and they should talk, talked about extending them to four-year average, let's see. Oh, make sure that our charter doesn't say he only as mayor, because some of the charters are saying, saying that's he and the mayor is actually a she. You know, those kinds of things that we really take, need to take a look at. And they really talked about compensation for, for counselors, because back when some of these rules are, were done, is that, you know, most of the people in the council were retired. We didn't have all these complexities, the town was smaller, now we have, average, we spend what, twenty, some people, or some counselors spend twenty hours a week at least, that's a part-time job. So, compensation, some cities say, hey, can we, they give free water or free utilities to council members, so it's some sort of compensation. So that was talked about this session. Let's see, I thought another thing that was interesting, they talked about the grant pass. And so.
We'll probably get something on that tomorrow night if it's.
Okay, I'll have some, another thing is that was recommended, Ben, and I'm not sure if you heard, but they recommended that we have R L I V P A training, part of, it's part of the land, land training. And the reason why is that there's. And the reason why is that there are situations where, uh, it's a religion, uh, land, and so because it's different laws, uh, religion can come in and do whatever they want on that particular land, and it's gotten some cities into trouble. So they asked to come to you and, and see if we can get part of our training with the planning commission.
That's a good comment, yeah, Brookings actually got in trouble with something like that, so.
So, um, that was, um, something that we can get part of the, with the planning commission as well. So, lots of great information. Oh, another thing that I did want to share with you guys, which I thought was interesting, if you don't have a separate, uh, page as a counselor, um, then even if you just reshare something from the city, or anywhere that's city-related, you can be, um, subject to public record, even though you didn't put, post it on your page. So be careful, um, if you do plan to share anything city-related, because you have authority, quote unquote, um, over the city, then it can be, um, you can, even if you just share a, an event, your personal page can be as public record. So, that, that was interesting, so we should keep those separately. And, um, they did talk about the homeless, um, the project Homeless Connect, um, there was a project that, that I love to share with you guys, um. Geez, gosh, you guys should come next time. Another thing too, is I encourage my fellow, uh, women, um, counselors to join the Women's Caucus. And, uh, I was.
Here's somebody on the board.
So actually, I was nominated and, um, appointed to the board this time. Um, oh, another thing I do want to, uh, there's a, a thing, there's a trend calling Zoom boom bombing. So Zoom bombing is when, because of public comment, somebody can mostly come on, online, and they, um, they're offensive, either be verbal or visual. And so that is happening a lot across the state, and so they're giving out a warning signs to all cities that we may, we need to really establish, um, uh, good protocols for our comments, the comments, especially on Zoom, or teams that we use. Um, and so, uh, we give us some suggestions that we can have a discussion on that as well. Um, they have scripts and so forth. Let's see, oh, I also advise, I, I would love to have a youth council. Some of our, my fellow council members would like to get on board with me to see how we can get that going. Um, I think that would also encourage the youth to be present in our meetings, that we have, we have more presence in our meetings, and then more volunteer opportunities. So, um, they gave out a great presentation and great, um, success stories. So, uh, yeah, um, it was a great event, had a great time.
Next year is the hundredth year, and it will be in Portland downtown, so it will be closer, and it'll be October thirtieth, over that weekend.
Everyone goes.
Thank you. Council President Miller.
Uh, thank you. Since our October seventh meeting, I have attended the county board of commissioners' meetings, uh, both on October ninth and October sixteenth. Um, I always try to bring topics forward to council, um, if they relate, or could somehow impact the city or, um, city council. And, uh, there was really only one notable thing, and that was that Andrea Jerkowitz came and gave a presentation on, um, basically taxes. Um, I will be sending out some information, it's on the county website and accessible to everybody, but I'll send out some information to all, I'll send it to Ben, and Ben can, um, distribute it. Um, but it's basically just, uh, really insightful, it's numbers, basically, where all the money is going and everything, and it's, you know, no surprise that schools, uh, are the number one, we'll call it money taker, and, uh, the fire districts are number two as far as who consumes the most taxes. Um, as far as the committees go, um, I just ask that our communication to the committees, uh, be very mindful, because we do have a lot of people on those committees that take their job very seriously and are very passionate about the things that they do. That's why I did suggest that we have unified communication on that, to make sure that we, uh, give an accurate representate, make sure that we're giving an accurate representation of where we're at with everything, and that we're just exploring the best way to use everybody's time and city resources. Um, I will be out, um, for the November fourth meeting, however, I will be attending virtually. And last, please vote, everybody's vote matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and tomorrow night, city county dinner at six P M. at the, uh, senior center, in third grade visit, the next day down here in the morning, if anybody wants to come for a bit. Um, appreciate that. Um, that's all I have for tonight. We are going to go into an executive session, so, um, so we don't get stuck in the middle. Um, could, should I take a motion to extend the meeting beyond nine if we have to at this time, what's on the record? Sometimes in the middle of the executive session, it's nine o'clock.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Council President Miller.
Um, I move that if necessary, city or the council, um, extend the meeting past nine P M. this evening.
Any seconds? And by Council Jacobs, in my discussion, as I'll do everything we can to not go past that, but in case we do, um, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye, opposed, carries. So we are now going into number, executive session, O R S one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-two-dash-D, labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All the members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. We don't expect to make any decisions, votes tonight after this, but we will open afterwards. Thank you, meeting adjourned. About two minutes?